It's Jay, good morning. Welcome to the Muskogee Creek National Council Regular Session. Today is Saturday, August 26, 2023. My name is Speaker William Lowe. The time is 9:28 a.m., and I call this meeting to order. At this time, I would like to ask Galen Cloud to come and introduce our invocation presenter for today. Galen?
Hello, Speaker. I knew what that took a guy there. Yeah, Michael did that. He don't want to full log at the Puna Yahanat. Michael George Thompson, yeah. Boom, Puna Yahanidundo. Have fun like you. I do log at that. Okay, let's who he did it undo. Have fun in. To both hot, he got get to get I do no know. Man, okay, I get it undo. Man, he don't want that. So he didn't. He don't want that. Gee, Zia man. Man, okay, I get it undo. So I knew what that. Michael George Thompson.
First of all, it's an honor to be here. Whenever the nation calls, I feel like it's my duty to respond. That is why I'm standing in front of you this morning. You know, I've been involved with our cultural all my life, so to speak. And I'm going to start the song with a language, and I'll go back and try to translate what I said. But the need to how you we. You call God. We do ways market. It thought that he say what did he doing? When you talk about to what he don't do. When he both fun girl know what? And it a hang good, huh? No way to waste it. Eh, boom, ballin. How you we do call God? Don't go to us, come, I get there to get away. When it a hang good, eh, boom, ballin. Mahin, I boom, meet it on Google. I get there to get away. When I call law, so it was a need to know what it. It's the Muskogee, don't want him, I get there to get. National Council, yes, get away to get. And after then, it to do and do. How you we do call to what he do and do. When. Now, I get that. When I each car, I get know what it. Both fun girl know what it. Him at ah, hung at key, do I use market? But me ask it and do. But I know how you want. I'm going to try to translate what it's got to saying. He's sitting here today, similar to what we do at our grounds. At our council, that whenever we have meetings, we, it's who I address to. First thing we do is that we always thank our Creator, for He's the one that, that's responsible for everything we do. And we always thank Him for bringing us together, maybe just for that one day. There's times when, you know, difficulties come, but we always look to the Creator. Even during our meetings, there may be some differences that come along, but we always put that aside and look to the Creator for guidance. So today, that's kind of what we do in that council believe they're, they're on the track, on the right track, to do good things for the nation. So, you know, it's just a few words, but I'm not, I'm not the greatest speaker of all. I can just say a few words. And today, I'll come to a close, and I thank the Speaker for the, um, the opportunity to be here and address the council and our people. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's give Miko Thompson a round of applause, please. Such amazing words, sir. We greatly appreciate you taking time out of your busy weekend to come visit with us today at the regular session meeting. At this time, before we get moving, I'd like to introduce Principal Chief David Hill, Modo Chief for being with us this morning. I'd like to introduce Second Chief Dell Beaver, Modo Second Chief for being with us today. You know, here, in the past few weeks, we've been getting little questions about cross-deputization. I'm going to go off the agenda just really quickly. We're going to do some letters of commendation for some heroism, outstanding performance, and a great partnership with the Muskogee Nation Light Horse and Holdenville Police Department. So, Ms. Representative Anna Marshall brought this to my attention a few weeks ago, and I think it's very, very worthy for us to do this and to show our partnership, not only to the council, but to our, our audience, and since we're being recorded, the world. So, at this time, I would like to ask Officer Madeline King from Holdenville Police Department to come down. And if you all could just stand here, Representative Marshall, if you could go out front here, Sergeant Larry Potter, Porter, excuse me, Sergeant Larry Porter from Holdenville, Officer Chris Partite from Holdenville. We have Officer Rachel Morgan from the Muskogee Nation Light Horse. Officer Octavius Holtz, Muskogee Nation Light Horse. Officer John Roberts, I believe. He Phillips will be receiving his award. So, I'm going to read one letter, but this letter goes to each one of these. And I will say, officers, thank you so much for your heroism, your dedication to our, to servicing our people. We will have this in a frame moving forward. Unfortunately, we couldn't find the frames for today, so I didn't want to go out and make you one before the meeting, didn't have time to do that. But I will go ahead, everyone, and read this letter once Representative Marshall hands Madeline, I'm going to read yours, so you'll be getting one. Letter of commendation for outstanding police services. And again, this is to each one, they each have their own. Dear Officer, in this case, Madeline King, I'm writing to express my sincere appreciation and commendation for the exemplary service demonstrated by you, members of your dedicated police force, during a recent incident on July 20, 2023, at the Holdenville Indian Community. Your professionalism, quick thinking, and commitment to public safety were commendable. On that day, Muskogee Creek Nation National Council Representative Anna Marshall was privileged to observe Officer King as he responded to Holdenville citizen behavioral issue and quickly stabilized and controlled the situation. From the moment she arrived at the scene, it was evident that she was fully prepared and equipped to handle the situation. She demonstrated exceptional communication skills by effectively calming down the situation and ensuring the safety of all parties involved. Her unwavering dedication to on, to going above and beyond the call of duty stood out the most. She remained level-headed and resourceful in the face of adversity, making split-second decisions that ultimately resolved the situation without harming the public or the individuals involved. Her ability to work seamlessly as a team and collaborative, and collaborate with other emergency responders showcased her commitment to the safety and well-being of our community. Officer Madeline King showed compassion and empathy towards those affected. She took the time to listen to concerns, offer support, and ensure that everyone felt heard and respected. Dedication and exemplary service demonstrated by officers like Officer King make our community a safer and more secure place to work and live. Her actions reflect positively, not only on herself, but on the Holdenville Police Department and the Light Horse it does save for the Muskogee Creek Light Horse Police Department as a whole. Her professionalism, commitment, and courage are a shining example for others. Thank you for your continued efforts in maintaining the safety and well-being of our community. Sincerely, William Lowe, Speaker, Muskogee Creek Nation. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give these officers a great round of applause. And Holdenville Community Board Members, if you're here, please come down and get into the picture as well. Holdenville Community Board Members, please. And again, I think it's imperative that we honor these kinds of partnerships, because as we know and hear and see throughout our communities, it's not like this in all of our districts. So, again, please Holdenville Board Members, come on down, let's get a good picture. All right, again, thank you all so much for your bravery. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you. And again, officers, we will have you an official letter in a frame, so you can just discard this letter right here for your records. Again, Representative Marshall, thank you for bringing this to our attention. And thank you all, council, for your patience in wanting to do this today. Now, on with our agenda. Approval of minutes. Excuse me. Roll call, National Council Secretary Alicia Strobel.
Speaker William Lowe.
Here.
Galen Cloud.
Yalega.
Mary Crawford. And like it's Joyce Steer.
President.
Patrick Freeman.
Here.
Sandra Golden.
President.
Ina Gouge.
Here.
Nelson Harjo.
Here.
Joseph Hicks.
Here.
Randall Hicks.
Present.
Charles McHenry.
Here.
Thomas Yehola Osborne.
Present.
Daryl Proctor.
Here.
Mark Randolph.
Present.
Speaker of sixteen, present, zero absent.
Sixteen, present, zero absent. That constitutes a quorum. Any business conducted this morning will be valid. Onto approval of minutes. We have minutes from emergency session, July 7, 2023, planning session, July 25, 2023, pre-agenda quarterly session, July 29, 2023.
Speaker.
Yes, Representative Marshall.
And that we approve all the aforementioned minutes.
Representative Marshall makes a motion to approve all aforementioned minutes, seconded by Representative Thomasine Yehola Osborne. Discussion. Do we have any discussion on the aforementioned minutes? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Ina Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Speaker of fourteen, favor, zero against.
Fourteen, favor, zero against. All aforementioned minutes are approved. Onto the order of business. TR-23-074, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation confirming the nomination of Michael Flood to serve on the College of the Muskogee Nation Board of Regents. Sponsor, Representative Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Anna Marshall makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Thomasine Yehola Osborne. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? We just interviewed Mr. Flood about a few minutes ago, so I think we're good to go. Hearing no more discussion, roll call vote, please.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Ina Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Speaker of fourteen, favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. TR-23-074 is adopted. At this time, Mr. Mike Flood, please stand and be recognized as a continuing member of the Board of Regents for the College of Muskogee Nation. Congratulations, Modo, for your dedication, sir. Next item on the agenda, TR-23-075, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Housing contract with BVP LLC Contractors. Sponsor is Representative Joseph Hicks.
Eager motion to adopt.
Representative Joseph Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Galen Cloud. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-23-075 is adopted. TR-23-076, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a memorandum of agreement between the Muskogee Creek Nation and the Indigenous Food and Agricultural Initiative at the University of Arkansas School of Law. Sponsor is Representative Joseph Hicks.
Eager motion to adopt.
Representative Joseph Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Galen Cloud. Discussion. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-23-076 is adopted. TR-23-077, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a right-of-way agreement with Oklahoma Natural Gas, a division of one gas associated with the construction of housing units known as Aguzi Duck Chinan Three Ponds Housing Units, excuse me, addition on behalf of the Muskogee Creek Nation. Sponsor, Representative Joseph Hicks.
Eager motion to adopt.
Representative Joseph Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Thomasine Yehola Osborne. Discussion. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-23-077 is adopted. TR-23-078, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a real estate contract for the purchase of property in Oak Mogy, Oklahoma. Sponsor, Representative Nelson Harjo Senior.
Speaker, make motion to adopt.
Representative Nelson Harjo Senior makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Thomasine Yehola Osborne. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Representative Golden.
I think this is the property that MNB had looked at earlier, and one of the problems, they were told it was in flood zone, and they didn't have the funds and other things. And with the amount of money, I just can't support it, because we should not be spending this amount of money at this time, because it's not a need. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Any other discussion, comments, questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Excuse me, is there a question? Comment? Representative Randolph, sir.
Thank you, Speaker. I was just wondering about the condition of the building.
Condition of the building, can we have a?
There more than one building? Is it two buildings or?
Come on down, please. Please ensure the microphone is on, introduce yourself, and address the council, please.
Thank you so much, Speaker and council. I'm Danielle Moss with the Realty Trust Services. Um, the building, there are actually two buildings, and they were both.
Speak up, please.
I'm sorry, they were both built in 1981 and renovated in 2015 and 2018. The structures are very sound, and they look great on the inside, and Environmental also has looked at that on an onsite visit, and it was found favorable, so it's in good condition.
Thank you, thank you, Speaker.
Yes, sir, thank you. Any, Representative Randall Hicks?
Thank you, Speaker.
Yes, sir.
This is for Ms. Mary Shunkel. Yes, please come down. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, Speaker and council. I appreciate this time to speak on behalf of the property that we are looking at. The main purpose.
Mary, Mary, hold on one second. Go ahead, Representative Hicks.
Can I address my question first?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The question I was going to ask is, it was mentioned there was no need for the building. Can you explain, if there is a need, and why?
Okay. There is a need. The property, ooh, am I too close? The property is a large property. There's two buildings. There's one that we plan to have for the Tax Commission Division, which, in the proposed budget, we're looking at a large expansion of the tax department. We're growing. We need more room. Where we're at right now is in the safe space building, and it's just not efficient. It does accommodate the tags, but it doesn't accommodate the tax commission for the growth that we're looking at. We are expanding. We have other offices. We're looking at another office in Muskogee. We have legislation that will be presented in the next two months, which will give us a lot more employees, a lot more authority over our reservation boundaries. So this is just in preparation of the growth that we're looking at. The buildings themselves, there's not much work to be done. We could actually move in. There are some just very minor things that will have to be done for us to move in. So I appreciate the time to let you know what our plans are, and I hope that we can look forward to having a new property.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Representative Hicks?
Thank you, Speaker. One more question, maybe Chief or Mr. Fife or even, anybody, somebody can answer. What about the master plan? I know we had plans, or I thought there was plans for the tax commission with the master plan site, so to kind of figure out what we're doing or where we're going with all this.
I had discussed this with Mary on the original master plan, and them being, as far as being independent, they requested they kind of be off-site for the master plan.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Representative McHenry?
Chief, with that being said, so does that mean that this will be a permanent site to sustain them for some time in future years?
I think this would be a permanent site.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff? Robert Huff? Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
No.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
No.
Sandra Golden?
No.
Ina Gouge? Speaker of ten in favor, four against.
Ten in favor, four against. TR-23-078 is adopted. TR-23-079, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a software services agreement with Gray Shift LLC for the Muskogee Creek Nation Light Horse Police Department. Sponsor is Representative Randall Hicks.
Thank you, Speaker. Motion to adopt.
Representative Randall Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Mark Randolph. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-23-079 is adopted. Next item on the agenda, TR-23-080, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a deed for property located in Tulsa County, Oklahoma. Sponsor, Representative Patrick Freeman Jr.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Patrick Freeman Jr. makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Thomasine Yehola Osborne. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-23-080 is adopted. TR-23-081, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to submit a tribal broadband connectivity program grant application. Sponsor, Representative Mark Randolph.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Mark Randolph makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Randall Hicks. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-23-081 is adopted. TR-23-082, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the construction of three new childcare facilities for the Muskogee Creek Nation Office of Childcare. Sponsor, Representative Daryl Proctor.
Thank you, Speaker. Motion to adopt.
Representative Daryl Proctor makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Galen Cloud. Discussion. Hearing any discussion? Representative Randall Hicks?
Thank you, Speaker. Anybody from childcare that can? Morning, Mr. Frank.
Morning.
Mr. Frank, I know there's three childcare centers. One is supposed to be in Okema, correct?
Yes.
Can you just let us know where in Okema that's going to be constructed? I've been asked that.
It's going to be built at where the old hospital used to be.
Okay, okay. I had some citizens asking me where it was going to be built, so that's why I just wanted to answer, so, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Any other comments, questions for Mr. Frank? Representative Golden.
How about the other two, in Ufala and Wetumka? Where will they be located?
One will be in Wetumka, and the other one will be in Ufala.
Where, though? Where they are or across the, in the same vicinity, on the same property?
Well, the one in Wetumka is going to be on the property where the food distribution they are already, and the follow-on is going to be where the new clinic is.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-23-082 is adopted. Thank you, sir. Just for the minutes and record, we have Second Speaker Robert Huff on line. He has technical difficulty using his microphone at this point, so what he's been doing is sending in his vote via text to our, to Alicia, so he's been voting, so we'll reflect that in the minutes. All right, on to the next item on the agenda. TR-23-083, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Principal Chief to submit a grant application for the Economic Development Administration for the benefit of the Office of Emergency Management. Sponsor is Representative Mark Randolph.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Mark Randolph makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Charles McHenry. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-23-083 is adopted. TR-23-084, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation designating the Muskogee Creek Nation Reservation as a Purple Heart Reservation. Sponsor, Representative Mark Randolph.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Mark Randolph makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Leonard Gouge. Discussion. Do we have any discussion?
Could I give a little time for Mr. Coon real quick?
Mr. Coon, please come on up. If you would please ensure the microphone is on.
Thank you, Speaker.
Yes, sir.
I've brought our state legislator for Purple Heart, Mitch Reed. He'll give his introduction on what he does for our state.
Mitch Reed, Purple Heart, Senior Vice Commander for the Department of Oklahoma. Honored to be here today to speak to all of you. Michael asked me to come and bring some sign samples of what you all might want to adopt at a later date. I also brought a plaque at which we would give you, if I can get it open here. It would be similar nation to this and I have done this all over eastern Oklahoma and I'm proud to say it's been a great six years since I started this in Broken Arrow, Oklahoma. And I've done three tribes already and I think it'll be great for the Okmogi Creek Nation, Muskogee Creek Nation, because that means a lot. And we got a lot more working on. And the one unique thing is we have actually done Keystone Lake. So it's a little bit different and everything, but we love, we love Purple Heart entities and I'm honored to be here. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for being here. Mr. Coon, would you like to say any other comments, sir?
I think this is a long time coming for our veterans that served in Vietnam, World War II, that sacrificed arm and limb to be wounded, disabled. This way it shows our nation that we support our veterans. We have 119 Purple Heart in our nations and I think for the way they were treated when they came home, not like World War II, but the rest of us on down the line, as far as being called baby killers and every kind of thing you can think of, in our service and being proud of our nation and of our uniform. And this way, this shows the nation that we support our 119 veterans for what they sacrificed to our nation, for our safety and for our National Counselor, our Chief and Second Chief. And I just think it's a great honor for the National Counsel to come up, step up to the plate and to approve this legislation for these veterans, because I know these veterans now, they may not think, they're old and they're in wheelchairs now and some are, have been amputated and stuff, but still now they hold their head up high now after they know that the nation is a Purple Heart Reservation. Madoff, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council Representative, any comments, questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Coon, where does that put us ranking among the five tribes? Who's the first?
Excuse me?
Of being a tribe that represents the Purple Heart? Does that make-
I have done the Osage Nation, I've done Cherokee Nation, in Oklahoma.
Okay.
Others that are getting on board with it. I'm honored to do this. They made me the coordinator for Oklahoma. I've had a lot of fun with it. I've traveled to interesting places like this and all over the state. So that's a good reason.
We have 35 more nations to make Purple Heart Reservation. As most, some of you know, I retired this coming Friday and that's going to be my mission is to make the 39 tribes here in Oklahoma Purple Heart Reservations.
All right, thank you.
We have other tribes in other states.
All right, great. Any other comments, questions? Representative Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. When we become this Purple Heart Nation, there probably are some more people that deserve or get one of those and they hear about us. Who do they contact and how do they get their name on this list?
They'll get with Grover Winn, our Director of Veterans Affairs. Grover?
All right.
Would you like to say something, Grover?
Good morning again. A pleasure to be here and honored to be here and answer the question you asked and we're actually in the process now, looking at some that were not awarded some of their decorations that should have been. So currently in the process of talking to some legislators about what we can do about this, but yeah, if they'll just contact the office, we'll do the paperwork to help them get whatever they need to get done in that area. And there are some out there that we haven't, that haven't been recognized that we need to recognize. And again, as Mike said, I thank you guys and ladies very much for your support. The last two years have really been encouraging to our veterans. We get, I get words every day from our veterans about how they're so proud of y'all, your support and they're proud again to, you know, many of us for many years, especially Vietnam vets, didn't wear our uniforms because we weren't welcomed home, but you're making them proud. So again, Madoff, thank you very much for everything you've done and you're doing and thank you for your help, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We greatly appreciate you. Before I call for the vote, I would like to ask any Purple Heart recipients to please stand within the crowd. I will say that it's an honor to serve alongside of a Purple Heart recipient, Representative Joseph Hicks, who is on the council. Let's give him a round of applause, please. Now I will say, Madoff, for your dedication as a Marine Corps veteran, I greatly appreciate you and I love giving Grover heck for being in the Air Force, but that's how we are to each other.
Well, we all appreciate it.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Speaker.
They kid about that, but you ask any Vietnam vet, when they were pinned down, they'll tell you, they knew the sounds of her jets when they called.
Outstanding. Outstanding. You got me.
Absolutely.
Yes, Representative Randolph.
Can we have all the veterans stand too, please?
Yes, all the veterans, please stand. Please stand. Madoff. We greatly appreciate your service. All right, any final comments, questions, concerns, representatives? Hearing none. For this particular item, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Andrew Golden.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Are yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
OCS. Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Inahola Osborn.
Yes.
Darrell Proctor.
Yes.
Figure out 15 in favor, 0 against.
15 in favor, 0 against. TR-23-084 is adopted. One more round of applause for becoming a Purple Heart Reservation. Thank you, ma'am. We greatly appreciate you.
Thank you very much for the honor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, TR-23-085, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Muskogee Nation Gaming Enterprises LLC, MNGE, to deposit additional funds in the Muskogee Creek Nation Casinos Insurance Reserve Fund. Sponsor, Representative Randall Hicks.
Thank you, Speaker. Motion to adopt.
Representative Randall Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Mark Randolph. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-23-085 is adopted. TR-23-086, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the Muskogee Nation Gaming Enterprises LLC, MNGE, to open a new gaming facility. Sponsor, Representative Randall Hicks.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Randall Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Nelson Harjo Senior. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-23-086 is adopted. NCA-23-071, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the Health Resources and Services Administration, HRSI, University of Oklahoma Health Services Center, the Family Medicine, Obsteroical Training Expansion in Residency for Tribal Rule and Medically Underserved Communities in Oklahoma Grant. Sponsor, Second Speaker, Robert Huff.
Motion passed.
Representative Leonard Gouge makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Discussion. Is there any discussion? Representative Golden.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When it says they're training, are these people going to have included in their training our culture orientation to deal with our citizens?
Chief, is there anyone from health or anyone online that can help us with this Morning, Second Chief.
Morning. Typically in the health system, they do go through cultural training. All their employees and all new employees go through a cultural training before they actually go out to the field. It's already incorporated, yes.
Thank you.
Right, thank you, ma'am. Any other comments, questions, please? Any? Second Chief, thank you so much. Roll call vote, please.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Inahola Osborn.
Yes.
Darrell Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Andrew Golden.
Yes.
Figure out 15 in favor, 0 against.
15 in favor, 0 against. NCA-23-071 is adopted. NCA-23-073, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation amending MCNCA Title 35, subsection 6-102, entitled Accountability. Sponsor, Representative William Lowe.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Joseph Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Thomas Inahola Osborn. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
OCS.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Inahola Osborn.
Yes.
Darrell Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Andrew Golden.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Figure out 15 in favor, 0 against.
15 in favor, 0 against. NCA-23-073 is adopted.
Speaker.
Yes.
May I ask just one question, just real quick?
Yes.
Will this be implemented-
Immediately.
Immediately.
It starts immediately, right? Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I was trying to think of what we said in the committee meeting, so yep, it is, sir. All right, on to the next item on the agenda. NCA-23-074, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of the National Park Service Tribal Historic Preservation Officer, THPO, grant for the benefit of the Historic and Cultural Preservation Department. Sponsor, Representative Galen Cloud.
Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Leonard
Gouge. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing, seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Andrew Golden.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
OCS.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Inahola Osborn.
Yes.
Darrell, Darrell Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Figure out 15 in favor, 0 against.
15 in favor, 0 against. NCA-23-074 is adopted. NCA-23-076, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing a special appropriation for the cost of necessary measures related to the protection of the Muskogee sacred site of Hickory Ground near Wetumka, Alabama. Sponsors are Representative Darrell Proctor and Representative Galen Cloud.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Darrell Proctor makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Galen Cloud. Discussion.
Speaker.
Yes, Representative Hicks.
I'd like to ask sponsor if I could also co-sponsor this.
Representative Joseph Hicks asked to be a co-sponsor. Representative Proctor agrees. We will annotate that in the minutes. Are any more discussion? Hearing no more discussion, roll call vote, please.
Darrell Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Andrew Golden.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
OCS.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Inahola Osborn.
Yes.
Figure out 15 in favor, 0 against.
15 in favor, 0 against. NCA-23-076 is adopted.[1578.75] NCA 23-077, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation appropriating funds to be used toward the purchase of property located in Oak Mogie County, Oklahoma. Sponsor is Representative Nelson Harjo Senior.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Nelson Harjo Senior makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Thomas Yehola Osborne. Discussion, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice, excuse me, roll call vote, please.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff? Votes yes. Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
No.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
No.
Sandra Golden?
No.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
We have twelve in favor, three against.
Twelve in favor, three against, NCA 23-077 is adopted. NCA 23-079, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funds received from the United States Department of the Treasury for the benefit of the Oak Mogie County Fairgrounds. Sponsors, Representative Joseph Hicks.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Joseph Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Nelson Harjo Senior. Discussion?
Yes, Speaker, could I give some time to, we have a couple of the board members from the Extension Office up there to come down and speak on this?
Yes, sir. Gentlemen, can you please come down? There are board members from the Extension Office here in Oak Mogie. Gentlemen, we greatly appreciate you being with us this morning. Please introduce yourself and give us a quick summary of the project, please.
Yes, I'm Jody Gilroy, Muskogee citizen, and I've been on the Fair Board for sixteen years now. And we're doing some upgrades out there, trying to help, we have a lot of Creek children that come through program and we're needing to do some upgrades on the facilities and these funds.
Outstanding.
Get through this.
Yes, sir, thank you, sir.
My name's Nathan Porter, and I'm just the president of the Fair Board.
Outstanding, good deal. Do we have any comments, questions? Representative Golden?
Yes, thank you, Speaker. When you say that you have a lot of Creek kids that come through this program, over the sixteen years, how many each year are participating in your programs?
I don't really have a number as far as how many kids would, but I do know that through the 4H and FFA programs throughout our county, there's quite a few kids. And we do have other programs through the Extension Office that, a lot of little programs that we have that a lot of Creek kids come through, try to help out.
So just one more question. Who do you work with and how, I guess that's two, how do you get them involved to participate in your activities there at the Fair?
We work through the OSU Extension Office in our schools. We're actually not paid to do anything, we're just officially. It's mainly through the school systems and the Extension Office, OSU.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments, questions? Representative Randall Hicks?
Thank you, Speaker. Chief, is our, is Billy, is his name Billy, that's over our 4H or agricultural program, is he here?
I gotta answer that. He's actually not here today. He is on the board for McIntosh County, and they're having a show today, and he's over there.
Zachariah, would you like to advocate, please?
Thank you, Speaker. I would just add that our youth ag programs also partners with the county to host some of their events inside, so that's another direct way that our citizens benefit from this particular investment.
Outstanding, thank you, sir. Representative Hicks?
Thank you. Okay, my question was gonna be, why don't we own our own building? Or what's preventing us from having our own? Our own barn? Our own barn, yes.
That was not the proposal brought before my office, but it's something we can consider.
Thank you.
Alright, yes, sir. Any other comments, questions? Gentlemen, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
No.
Robert Huff? Voted no. Anna Marshall?
No.
Charles McHenry?
No.
Thomas Yehola Osborne?
No.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
No.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
No.
Joyce Steer?
No.
Yes.
Sandra Golden? Leonard Gouge?
No.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
We have five in favor, ten against.
Five in favor, ten against, NCA 23-079 fails. NCA 23-080, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the Oklahoma Highway Safety Office for the benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Light Horse Police Department. Sponsors, Representative Randall Hicks.
Mr. Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Randall Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Mark Randolph. Discussion, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff? Yes, he votes yes. Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Speaker, fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, NCA 23-080 is adopted. NCA 23-083, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation amending MCNCA Title 35, Subsection 12-103, entitled Donation Guidelines. Sponsors, Representative Mark Randolph.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Mark Randolph makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Charles McHenry. Discussion, is there any discussion?
Speaker?
Yes, Representative Gouge?
For the, for the recording of this session, I'd like to hear how this is gonna be performed.
Yes. Representative Randolph, do you have a? Amendment to that, sir? Yes, sir.
It's for accountability purposes. We have our donation guidelines. Anything that has to have a waiver that is above our guidelines, our committees can ask for the financials, but we can, will want a receipt. Anything that's substantial, years ago, I sponsored a bill for one of our rural communities for water, I think it was ninety something thousand, but we were never able to find out if that money was spent on that water or not. So it's just accountability, it's just saying, if you're gonna get all this money, then we'd like to see a receipt. When it goes through committee, we have the option to ask for their financials. We do the same thing with our communities. Muskogee community, charter community comes before us, we ask for their financials. So what we're doing is, you know, what we ask of our own people, we're just asking of everybody. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Representative Gouge, is that good for you, sir? Alright, thank you, sir. Yes, Representative Hicks, Joseph?
Just a question for the sponsor. I was just kinda wondering why we're all of a sudden coming up with this when earlier in the year, there were donations for upwards of a hundred and sixty, almost two hundred thousand to other places, and, but now, all of a sudden, it's wanting to be changed? Or followed?
This is for special appropriations outside of Muskogee Creek people. It's for those entities, it's something that I've thought about since I've been on council. I've been thinking about it for years. I just hope to do it now.
Thank you, thanks, Speaker.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments, questions? Representative Golden?
Thank you, sir. I think it was in a, in a different meeting, but I forget who the employee was, but they were saying that it was hard to finish some of their paperwork because one entity did not submit receipts, and so it's hard for the finance department to continue and do that, so this is accountability, and I think it should be across the board.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, well said. Any other comments, questions? Last call, roll call vote, please.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff? Yes. Anna Marshall?
No.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
We have fourteen in favor, one against.
Fourteen in favor, one against, NCA 23-083 is adopted. NCA 23-084, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation creating Title 6, Chapter 8, entitled Muskogee Creek Nation Juvenile Delinquency Code. Sponsors, Representative Randall Hicks.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Randall Hicks makes a motion to adopt, they're seconded by Representative Leonard Gouge. Discussion, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff? Votes yes. Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce? Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
We have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, NCA 23-084 is adopted. NCA 23-085, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the US Department of Interior Division of Economic Development, Office of Indian Economic Development, for the benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Tribal Utility Authority. Sponsors, Representative Randall Hicks.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Randall Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Mark Randolph. Discussion, have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff? Votes yes. Anna Marshall? Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
We have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, NCA 23-085 is adopted. NCA 23-086, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the US Department of Energy Grid Deployment Office for the benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Tribal Utility Authority. Sponsor, Representative Randall Hicks.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Randall Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Discussion, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff? Votes yes. Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
We have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, NCA 23-086 is adopted. NCA 23-087, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the US Department of Commerce for the benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Tribal Utility Authority. Sponsors, Representative Randall Hicks.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Randall Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Mark Randolph. Discussion, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff? Votes yes. Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, NCA 23-087 is adopted. NCA 23-088, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation amending NCA 21-156, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation approving the, approving and authorizing the principal chief to execute and file articles of organization with the Office of the Secretary of the Nation to form Muskogee Nation Gaming Enterprises LLC under the Muskogee Creek Nation Limited Liability Company Act and approving the operating agreement for the Muskogee Nation Gaming Enterprises LLC as amended by NCA 22-017. Sponsor is Representative Randall Hicks.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Randall Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Patrick Freeman. Discussion, do we have any discussion? Representative Hicks?
Speaker, I don't have any discussion, but after the vote, if we quit, if we could recognize the MNGE chairman, he is, he is present.
Yes, sir, certainly will. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff? He votes yes. Anna Marshall?
Yes.